He just dick was standing there.
We've got one, two, three, four, thank you.
Did you?
Yeah.
Did you get happy time? I got a break.
Okay.
Mr. President, we release the prayer for sure.
Let's pray. For sure, Father Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. We ask for your anointing in the midst of everything. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Councilmember Dietz.
Here.
Bolden.
Here.
Blevins.
Here.
Sandsing.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Mashburn.
Here.
Trailer.
Here.
Twitty. Smith.
Here.
Rains.
Here.
All present, sir.
Isn't that about me? I'm here too. You always say, "Mr. Mayor?"
Mr. Mayor.
I'm here, okay. So, before us, we have a presentation of the minutes of August 5th, August 19th meetings. And, uh, I entertain a motion.
No move.
Second.
Any changes or discussions? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Alright, that carries. Now, we're not, we don't have a consent agenda yet, cause the agenda went out before the meeting. Yes, Councilmember Blevins.
Like to make a motion to go into executive session.
For personnel matters.
For a personnel matter, yes, sir.
About somebody under the handbook, non-elected official.
I don't know how much more clear I could say that it's, that it's, you know, a, a situation for the city. So, yes, I don't know any other way that I can still say it. Yes, sir, I'm 100% it is about someone who is...
As long as it's somebody that's under the handbook, non-elected official, we can go into executive session. If it's approved.
Um, I'm pretty sure that elected officials are, uh, are under the handbook as well.
No. We're not. We don't have vacation, we don't have, uh, sick time, our pay's set by ordinance.
Except for the premium pay that you received for, for...
Let's just discuss it out, I'd rather discuss it out here.
Oh, well, great, awesome.
If it has to do with me.
Well, I mean, it's not just you, but yeah, there's, there's two issues that I have to talk about, so...
If it's about employee under the handbook, then we need to go to executive session.
Okay, let's do executive session.
Okay, so, there's a motion. Are you making a motion?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all of them in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
No.
Uh, did not carry. Roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Yay.
Councilmember Bolden.
Nay.
Councilmember Blevins.
Yay.
Councilmember Sandsing.
Nay.
Councilmember Ray.
Nay.
Councilmember Mashburn.
No.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Rains.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
What's the...
We have a tie.
Councilmember Dietz, did you vote near your next?
You voted, how did you vote? You voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, well, let's get it over with.
Alright, we're gonna do it.
I vote yes.
Okay, well, you can't vote no, so...
That's right.
Oh, I missed my devil.
I'm gonna let the people get by, uh, I don't knock 'em over, I'll just go last.
I'm gonna go grab water, do you want me to grab this off?
No, I'm fine, I guess. Uh, I might just take a stroll myself.
Yeah.
Are we keeping it running?
Yeah.
Well, I said, well, just... I didn't, I didn't have fun, I didn't have fun. I was told you, I was a prophet, I was gone. Everything behind me. I survived.
It dropped down some of...
Yeah, I should do that, I'll take it here around there tomorrow. So, always a black gash in the world, sir.
I know, I was the one. Some of it, yes. High side's...
I got, I got a lot of high side right now. I'm already there.
Yeah.
You guys, you guys, you guys.
I'll give that, give that home, home.
No, no, I think that's all. Yeah. I wanted to force work.
Hey, I got a leader, I got some job. Yes, I am. That, that actually... I have a little child, I was saying. Yeah.
This is, you can have it moved sometime, like, three years ago.
Squeaks me.
What you doing? Mission about, I got it. Yeah. I, I know your pain, uh... You know, it's, it's just, uh, it's true, there's a danger in some countries. Somehow, maybe, probably, he's standing there, I'm not blind, you know, but the baby's in his room, he's... They were caught by this thing, you know, I can't see. So, Greg, Sheriff. Terry, Terry, uh, look out for Terry calls. Uh, Kim, I think that, and I had a, uh, you meant, now, now, we can turn, uh, you know, the way...
Both come, six.
His first link, your mom, she's real low. And it's like, it's hard to... I know, you look out, you're doing everything. You don't feel that's I... So...
I know, and so I should do that.
Kids, there's somebody talking out, so, like, spot was off, he's lined up. But kids, they have some bag, or, 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 kids, that's their time.
Yeah.
It's a mess, please, we're not telling those girls.
We're not talking about the kids. I know, it's a drop, and we're trying to, it's a mess. It was, we sit down, we sit down, yeah. This is the right time. He's got, he's got, he's got, he's got. He thinks it just gets better. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's all downhill for me.
Oh, yeah.
He said, I'm gonna come in and see you, and I said, will you do that, sweetheart? I got it, I got it. I'm doing much better. As you can tell, I'm not on the walker, I'm on the cane, I'm not fast yet, but I'm getting there. Yeah. Thank you. I'm gonna dish it to his chair, and Terry.
I can continue right now.
Reidy, I entertain a motion for you to go back, entertain a motion, let's go back into our regular agenda.
Second.
You had a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay. What did we do? There was no vote taken. No vote was taken, we, we discussed, we worked it out, and we're done, so. Alright, so that brings us on to ordinance sixteen eighty. Uh, I entertain a motion to put sixteen eighty on the first reading.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden.
Aye.
Councilmember Blevins.
Aye.
Sandsing.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye. Ordinance number sixteen eighty, an ordinance creating and certifying toxins against rural properties at various locations within the city for balances due from services rendered by and/or on behalf of the City of Jacksonville, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Okay. Discussion, do we, does everybody know what we're doing?
Good question.
Yes, sir.
On the last page, page forty-two, about halfway down, is that a typo, or is that real?
That eleven, what, which number?
Eleven thousand.
That's correct, that is, you, the.
I saw another eleven hundred and seventy-five down there, I thought it might have been a.
There's one that's over nineteen thousand as well.
Yeah, that's, there's, uh, I think you're talking about the George Gage trailer park we had to remove?
I thought the nineteen thousand.
I don't have it.
Yeah, no, in total, it's over thirty thousand dollars worth of stuff between the three pages.
So which one are you asking about?
It was the eleven thousand one.
Okay. Which is, is that it?
Chris Gambit.
Oh, yeah, that was a house we had to tear down, uh, that had asbestos in it. That was partially burned. And just for information, they're receiving bids right now on the house on Corner Hickory and Gray, this half burned and looks like a junkyard. Yeah, yeah.
That was all it is.
Okay, any further discussion on, you know, this is what we do, you have unpaid, uh, with code, we found a lien on your property, so maybe one day we collect some money. Okay.
Question, so what do we do, do these people know, do we contact them?
Yes.
Then do we, uh, do we start a process here?
They've been notified they have, uh, outstanding balance, they were given a certain time period to repay that and told that if they didn't, they would have a lien on their property, so if this is approved, this will go to Pulaski County, and this will go on their taxes for next year.
And if it's ever sold, then it'll be have to paid through closing.
And you said that we currently have an open bid for, uh, condemned property, once the closing date on that?
We have the one that's open bids, we're, we're trying to find where we can get those done at a lesser price than what we've, we've been paying. So we've been contacting some other people that might do this for us and make.
So there's no set date, closing date of opening of the bids being opened?
I don't know if they have to do a bid or what they do at code, they, they kinda do their, it is a bid, okay. 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 But yeah, so there'll be something, uh, when that's done. Um, okay, I entertain a motion to approve on first reading, put on second reading.
So move.
Second.
The motion, second, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Bolden.
Aye.
Blevins.
Aye.
Sandsing.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve on second, put on third and final reading. Roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Bolden.
Aye.
Blevins.
Aye.
Sandsing.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
Um, before I go to the next ones, anybody have any further comments, say what you say on this?
Uh, I do have a question. Um, so are, um, any of the people listed, um, like reoccurring, uh, individuals in the city that, uh, have outstanding balances from previous times?
I would guess yes, but I don't know for sure.
I would see that that's a fair assumption, I don't have a number, I haven't compared this to previous years.
Okay.
And I do want you to notice how long this list is.
Yeah, it's three pages.
And that's a direct reflection on how much better code is operating now that it's under PD, and they've got a lieutenant over it and sergeant in there, they seem to really be getting out and doing a much better job. The, the house on, uh, Hospital has now been torn down at the owner's expense. So getting these burnt houses tore down are really important, and these vacant houses that are causing people to stay in that shouldn't be there, so. But I'm just telling, code's done a great job.
For sure. Yes, and I.
Yes, yes, let's give code a hand. Pass that on, oh, here he is. Lieutenant Wright. Uh, I just want to tell you thank you, and, and what a good job your, your code enforcement's doing. And I know it's a learning process, but we do appreciate it, don't we, y'all?
Yes, Lieutenant Wright has been doing an exceptional job, and I can't thank him enough for all of the work that he's done and working with the community on this.
Thank you. Alright, now I entertain the motion to approve and adopt sixteen eighty.
So move.
Got a motion, the second, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Bolden.
Aye.
Blevins.
Aye.
Sandsing.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
I entertain a motion for emergency clause.
Second.
Got a motion, second, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Bolden.
Aye.
Blevins.
Aye.
Sandsing.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, alright, that brings us to an item of, uh, budgetary issue, Councilmember Blevins.
Uh, yeah, I, um, I was in the budget meetings, and, and the budget meeting, when I was talking with the maintenance department, um, the newly maintenance department, I noticed that there was a, a big omission of the ten thousand dollar maintenance that was, um, usually been allocated for building maintenance for the, for the Boys and Girls Club. Um, and there was some conversation that happened during the meeting, um, and so I decided to talk to the, call the board and ask them if they knew that some of this stuff was happening, and they, they decided they would like to come up here and talk.
Okay, and you were told during that meeting, only reason, but it actually is in the budget, it's contingencies under the maintenance.
Yes, sir, and, and I.
But they have to sign a lease before we'll go in the building for.
And I, and I did explain that, that you added it after, after they had already said they wanted to come up here, and after speaking with them, they still would like to come, come address the, the council.
You're welcome, come and speak. Uh, Monday, we sent Marshall Nash the lease, I have a copy of it, if y'all would like to have that lease, I brought, I printed you a copy and brought it in case you haven't seen it. Uh, but if someone's gonna speak, please introduce yourself and tell us to what position you hold on the board.
Absolutely, my name is Freddie Scott, I'm the vice chair of the board.
Tark Shahada, I'm just on the board.
I'm on the development, uh, committee too.
Johnny Higson on the board.
Our treat man, Johnny who?
Uh, well, we're here, uh, first of all, thank you, Mayor, and Mayor, and to the honorable City Council, uh, individual members, want to say thank you for this opportunity, thank you for Councilman, um, Blevins. So we're here, uh, thank you for the copy of the lease, uh, we'd love to take a look at it.
Sure.
Have our normal legal review, we're so excited about the opportunity to continue to work with the city. Uh, I think we're all on the same page because we understand the importance of working with our children. Um, and, uh, it's, it's beyond the, the sports and the recreation that, that can be afforded them, but we're excited about the opportunity to build character and build an opportunity for them to grow professionally, and career-wise as well, and have the, the, um, the Boys and Girls Club as the, uh, the catalyst to, to make that happen, so. We appreciate an opportunity to work with you, and excited about taking a look at the lease and getting that out of the way. Appreciate that opportunity.
Right, and where it doesn't list Boys and Girls Club anymore in the budget, it's listed as, you know, potential contingencies, because it's the same lease we have for the Chamber Senior Center, uh, we, up to ten thousand dollars will match in, in, uh,
so the.
Three pairs to the building.
So for the record, the, uh, is, am I understanding that the document refers to an agreement between the city and, and is there a particular entity there for that?
The Boys and Girls Club.
It does, okay, I, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, the Boys and Girls Club, there's three five oh one C threes that operate in city businesses, and we have the same lease with all of them. Our maintenance departments require these leases for the inner of the building to, to change your air filters, fix the leaky, you know, drinking fountain or whatever. And major things we'll talk about, and we'll try to help you get money to do that, to do major repairs.
I was gonna ask, Mayor, uh, is there any list that's, that's, that differentiates what's our responsibility as, as?
It's in the lease.
It's in the lease, right.
And I apologize for not sending it to our board, I sent it to Mr. Nash, I didn't have.
He did not say, he said today he did not get it, so I'm gonna ask him.
Yeah, I sent it.
And she copied me, so I printed it, and.
We believe that, but he.
Right, we didn't have everybody's email. Right.
You did not receive it.
So after y'all look at it, discuss with Stephanie or Stephanie or myself, and we'll be happy if you need to come back for the board, we'll do that.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Okay?
Very good, uh, any particular questions beyond that?
Does anybody else have a question for the Boys and Girls Club?
How many kids do y'all have at the Boys and Girls Club at this time?
So, very good question, uh, we had, obviously, everyone was impacted by the pandemic. And so I believe on record, and don't quote me on this, I, I need to defer to our CEO, Ms. Jasmine Wakefield, but I believe the number is, is right around mid twenties, uh, that they're managing, because there has to be a, from a safety perspective, be in position to account for staff and member ratio for, for safety. Uh, so that huge impact of the pandemic, but there are clubs throughout the state that had to go through the same thing, and we're leveraging, uh, our experiences to, to. We can't make parents do it, but we, we can't have a safe environment, leverage safety measures to make sure that when they're there, they're having an enjoyable experience. Not just for the members, but also for the staff as well.
Definitely want more to find. Hey, one, one other, this is the Jacksonville Boys and Girls Club, are all the board members citizens of Jacksonville?
No, no, I'm not either.
I'm not either, no.
Mr. Nash is?
Yes, yes, he is.
He lives out at.
I lived here at one time.
So I understand there's twenty members, is that what you're saying?
I believe it's mid twenties, and I can, I can certainly, if you, if you don't buy it, I'd love to get back with you the exact number of the membership, but I don't think it exceeds twenty-five.
I was told twenty-eight recently.
Twenty-eight, okay, alright.
Within a month. And you're starting your basketball program, if I understand correctly?
I, I, again, this is on the operations side, but we're very into this, uh.
But you're working at getting it done.
I'm sorry?
You're working at getting the basketball program.
Absolutely.
Right, that's my understanding.
And, and, and part of that is, again, it's like the safety, you know, having to leverage which teams come in, when they come in, because it's an exciting time for spectators as well. So wanted to create that, uh, environment, but that won't go away, absolutely not.
Good.
One, one other question.
Yes, sir.
How is communication between the board and your CEO, now, I've had some rather disturbing phone calls concerning a certain dysfunction in communication?
Yes, I, I would like to first acknowledge that, like most organizations, we, we have some levels of dysfunctions, and communication is certainly one, one that we'll continue to work on. Uh, it's been challenging because we're all full-time employees, and there are things, then a transition with the, the new CEO, et cetera, bringing her onboard. Uh, but we're very interested in growing that, uh, CEO, board relationship, and nothing will prohibit us from continuing to grow, even incorporating some professional development.
Any other questions for the Boys and Girls Club?
No, I'd just like to thank you guys for all of the work that you're doing to enhance the lives of our future leaders.
Well, I appreciate that, uh, just for the record, we are doing various elements to what we call time, talent, and treasure, to bring to the table. And don't know if you're aware, but there's federal dollars that have been given to the state to identify, um, families and students that are considered homeless. And believe it or not, in Jacksonville, there have been a trend going up on kids experiencing homelessness.
Most definitely.
Not just, uh, in the street or under a bridge, but those that may be in a vehicle, staying with other relatives, don't have a permanent address.
Staying in a kitchen, I've heard that.
Absolutely, so there are dollars that are available, we're looking to work and with the school districts and with other entities to identify who they are, because there are a lot of resources available to them. If we work with them, it assists in keeping them from migrating over to foster care, for example, if there's an issue, so.
Yeah, and I, I definitely love hearing that you guys are looking to, um, work with those, uh, those individuals, those families, and, uh, getting the resources to them, uh, so that they, uh, again, are having that quality enhancement that the future leaders of our country need.
Well, thank you, and I might just add to that, we're, it's one thing having professional development, uh, given to staff, educators, but so too the bus drivers.
Yeah.
Uh, security, I believe barber shops, the, the other people within the community can also, they see some things work. Uh, it's about identifying, uh, those members who may be challenged, and thank you, uh, there are resources available to them.
Finally, say one other thing, and, and, no respect, uh, I, I, just because I don't live here, my, my, I don't live here, but my heart's here, for sure. I just wanted to make that known to everybody on the board, and my heart's with the club, for sure.
Thank you, I know he is.
Plus, that you are supporting, because the Boys and Girls Club is a national organization out of city. Um, so we do appreciate the fact that you.
In fact, that being the case, we had to leverage our national organization to assist us during this transition here, so they provided a lot of support.
Yeah, because you, you lost a real good CEO.
Well, that was their decision.
Just encourage the board, the CEO, and all the parties involved to work together, and remember, it's for the benefit of the kids. That's, that's your priority.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
It's not about anybody, anybody's personalities.
Absolutely, totally agree.
Okay, have questions, contact, uh, our city attorney, Ms. Freedman.
My closing comment is that I think one, one thing that prompted the conversation was about the maintenance, um, uh, understanding, there's no paperwork per se, but we look forward to find out exactly, uh, what's available, and we'll make sure we.
Sure.
Uh, the national organization came around and did an assessment of facility from a safety perspective, so we identified, uh, those things to ensure that we're on top of things, uh, uh, because those are membership requirements as well. So we appreciate the opportunity to, to have anything available to us, and we work with, uh, Mr. House.
We want to be good partners.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you for your time.
Johnny.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So just to clarify, the ten thousand dollars for maintenance was never out of the budget?
No, it was just moved over to the maintenance budget.
It was just under a different line?
Yeah, and a different name.
So.
It's there.
Okay.
It's in the budget.
I just want to make sure that that's on record.
Since we have this new maintenance, uh, department, we've never had before, we don't know what air conditioner go out in this building, what heaters, what, what's gonna happen over at Community Center, so we've got some, you know, things in there to potentially help with anything like that, or will help if anything happens. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club Senior Center are, but no, it's, it's always been in there, just not the same line item. Okay, that brings us, yes.
I would, I would just like to clarify that I was in the meeting.
Right.
With, with Kevin House and yourself, and I, the thing that prompted all of this was I asked, where is this money? And you said, they are not getting the money unless this is signed.
Right, and you were told, not necessarily by me, you were told in that meeting, when they sign the lease, then, then it'll be there.
Yeah, but at the time, it was not there.
Because the lease wasn't signed.
Absolutely, I'm just saying that that is why.
Until they sign the lease.
That is what prompted me to contact, and that's why it was not there when I.
Well, I think, I think, I think we all have better knowledge now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so that brings us to, uh, ordinance sixteen eighty-one, which is our budget ordinance, and my department heads are here to answer questions, but I'd, I would ask that we put it on the first reading, I entertain a motion to put ordinance eighteen eighty-one on the first reading.
So move.
We're gonna do the budget review, just put it there, and then we're gonna discuss, I, I didn't know how we're gonna do that. Okay, so we want, do we want to do it reverse order? Okay, I mean, I just thought the review would be A one. What do y'all want to do as a group? Do you want to go ahead and, and read it, and, and then, then discuss it? Whether we vote on it or not to, tonight or not, doesn't matter, but we can just read it and go on and not have a review, that will be our review, if that's.
This may rule with six, order sixteen eighty-one on first reading.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye, oh no, I need a roll call, sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden.
Aye.
Councilmember Blevins.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandsing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Rains.
Okay, and, yeah, sorry, so that we're clear, we're, are we talking about sixteen seventy-nine?
No, sixteen eighty-one is the new number now, it, which is.
The difference is the ordinance number.
It's on your desk, but at seventy-nine, it's really eighty-one.
Okay, yeah, aye.
Okay.
Ordinance number sixteen eighty-one, an ordinance adopting a fiscal budget for twenty twenty-two, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures for operation of various departments of city government for the purchase of materials, supplies, equipment, and services covering general fund operations, street fund, emergency medical services fund, shooting range fund, and sanitation fund, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
Thank you, alright, now then, it's open for discussion, whatever department head y'all would like to ask questions about the budget too. If you want to start with Cheryl, give us an overview, what, I'm just asking y'all what y'all would like.
Could we start with Cheryl?
Yes. And you may want to get a microphone in the seat, Cheryl.
Yeah, she needs to get over here in front, in front.
Oh, you, yeah, she probably needs her computer.
My computer is plugged in up here.
We need to get you a taller chair.
There is one right behind her.
Alright, I have the, the budget document on my computer. Evidently, it went to sleep or something. Pull your mic down, Cheryl. Okay, I have, I have the budget on my computer, and any changes that we make, I will make a note, and I'll make those corrections later, instead of taking the time to do it here, but.
I guess what we're asking is for an overview, am I correct, Councilmember Rains?
Yeah, that's what you were saying, um, sorry, there was a lot of. Okay, um, well, while we are, uh, bringing your computer up, I do have a question on the differences between, uh, we have, uh, reoccurring, uh, line out item of estimated revenue funds available for blank versus, uh, the budgeted distributments, uh, for the, uh, twenty twenty-two budget, um, there are a couple of sections where those, um, those numbers are not equal.
Right.
Section three, um, and whatnot.
The general fund and the street fund have to be balanced, the revenues have to match the appropriations or the expenditures. The enterprise funds, they do not have to match, because they operate more like a business, which some of them, they have, they have more revenues than they have expenditures, but then they also have, some years they have more expenditures than they have revenues, and the difference would be covered by their fund balance, and so that's the reason why EMS, sanitation, and the shooting range, they do not have to match a balance.
Right, so those, uh, those funds going over the amount, uh, would be covered by their, their, uh, you said they have a, a surplus fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Or by. Or by general fund. From the general fund, correct?
Correct. I can't get my balance to work. Well, it's not accepted.
I'd like to commend the accounting department for, all these years I've been on the council, we've always come up with a balanced budget, we never had any trouble with it, I don't know. And I think this year's a little different, twenty-three million dollar budget, a lot of money, and, uh, we just have to manage it.
That's the biggest thing we've ever had. Okay, thank you. Are we, are we working on technical stuff? Are we, are we working on technical stuff?
Yes.
Is Emily?
Yes. Okay, there it goes. Okay, I finally got it up.
Okay.
Okay.
So question, uh councilmembers' questions of Cheryl. Councilmember Blevins.
Um, I I kind of, I called and asked you a little bit about this, and I was wondering if you could explain it just a little bit more, because I I don't think I really walked away with a good, good idea. Now, I know that when we went over the budget items, there was a lot of items that were budgeted for 2021 that we did not spend that money. They were budgeted for 2021, we we had the money allocated for them, but we did not end up spending it. And some of those same exact items are duplicated this year because, for 2022, because they're money that we're going to end up spending in 2022 to buy the stuff, because it wasn't available in 2021.
Correct.
So my question is, is, did that money just go into the the money that we allocated, did that go into the general fund? Or was that money added into this number to allow it, is that why we're at $24 million?
No, um, the items that were budgeted in the 2021 budget that did not get purchased this year, the department may have decided that they needed that money to be used on a different purchase instead. And in that case, then they may have opted to just wait on, because something may have come up as an emergency at, that wasn't planned for, but needed to be done. And so therefore, they they reallocated that money, which they have the authority to do so, as long as their bottom line budget does not go over what was budgeted.
Absolutely.
And so therefore, they still needed what was budgeted for in '21, so they're putting it in the '22 budget, so that they could get it in 2022.
So there is no excess money?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an estimate of what our reserves will be, how many days the reserves will have at the end of 2020? We haven't got that audit yet.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the audit yet, but I'm estimating that it's around 80 days.
Okay. Of course, you know, my goal is not.
The, it's the 2020 audit is being completed now, and I think that what I've estimated for the end of '21, using the '22 budget, it looks like it'd be close to 80 days.
And where were we about five years ago?
I can't remember that. We we were, we were.
A lot lower.
We we were down, we had gotten down really low to where we were.
That's why I'm going to be quiet.
Like, like ju- just a few weeks or something like that, we had gotten really bad.
Okay, any more questions of Cheryl?
Um, it was noted that this is our largest budget as of yet. Uh, would you say that that is because of CARES Fund monies? Or what would you say that that is?
I think that it is due to our city and county sales tax, because since they passed the law to use the internet sales, that has boosted our sales tax revenue tremendously, and that's the reason why it is as high as it is.
So because they've been charging sales taxes on online transactions?
True.
And I think that's what you're seeing with the state, that's now turn around and going to try to lower income taxes, because that that generated more than was projected, not just for the state, but for the county and for the city. We get part of the county turn back money for the city. County gets very little, they get like, like 12% of that one cent for the county, it's split between the cities mostly. So I think that's the biggest change we've seen. And less border bleed, I think we've seen some of that, and more people are eating local and not going, because restaurants haven't been open and stuff of that nature, and fewer people are going to restaurants, so they just more local. Okay, any more questions of Cheryl?
I have one question. On the Chamber of Commerce, the preliminary budget was $2,000, but recommended was zero.
Right, because we, whenever we were in, at first beginning the preliminary budget, we were thinking that we could, may have be able to do a contract with the Chamber of Commerce, but then we found out that we could not do that as a city entity the way that we have a, because we already have a contract through our A and P Commission with the Chamber of Commerce, and it would be like double dipping out of city.
So in answer to that, it's not something we're taking away from 2020 or 2021?
Uh-uh, no.
Our delay with the city with the chamber is no different than it's ever been.
Right, right. Yeah.
Well, it kind of looks like we gave it to them.
Yeah, but but.
We wanted to.
We we wanted to give them extra money, but then we we were informed that it wouldn't be able to do that, so. So that's what we, that's the reason why it was in there in the preliminary, but then whenever we found out that we couldn't do it, that's the reason why I'm sticking up.
Councilmember Blevins.
Are we, are we asking all the questions right now, or are we asking just the ones for Cheryl and finance?
Well, if you got one for for a department head, save it until later, if it's overall budget, if it's going to be Cheryl, we're going to answer it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's finance, I I just have a question. The, the $43,000 contract that that you have listed that you're entering into, is that the one that we voted on earlier in the year for the audit, for the new audit company?
Yes, yes.
Because I remember, I remember that number was more than $43,000, so I was kind of curious why, you know, I mean, I'm glad it came in less, but.
No, that that contract is more than that. And I'll go into my contract services.
If it's more than that, is uh there a possibility for it being covered under two line items instead of just one?
Um, it's, it's in my contract services, which is my 50/30 account, and it, and the total amount of my contract services is $82,065.
You said which fund?
That's in the general fund under Department 11. So that con- that contract is actually $80,200 from our auditing services. It it's a bit, it's a, it's a larger, because we had been using Macalester and Associates, which is a local firm, and now we're going to be using BKD. So the price increased.
Macalester didn't bid.
Yeah, Macalester did not bid.
Okay, and just so that I'm clear, uh, so Department 11 contractual services, which line item under that?
First one.
First one.
Well.
It.
The allow volunteers line?
The contract, yeah, the contract services slash allow slash volunteer, yeah, it's in that line.
I think all or most of the department heads are here to answer questions too, if you need them. But I want to say thank you to those councilmembers that did come to the different meetings and sit in on those, because it's really informative for one of the councilmembers and for us to get your feedback during those meetings.
Some of us don't have a job and work full-time, so we want to do that.
I know. I I wasn't yelling at Mr. Trailer. Oh, Councilmember Blevins.
Fine. Um, I also asked this, and I know that you you weren't definitely clear on it, but the the bus plan that we voted on for Rock Region, uh, that was not in the budget, did you determine where that money was going to come out of? If it was coming from street, or if it was coming from capital improvements, or did did we decide where that money was?
I do not, I do not believe that I put that in the budget, however, if it fits the mass transit definition, we can take it out of the CARES Act funds, which is not in any of our funds.
And since that's what they do, you would think it would fall in that category, but we got to make sure before we do it.
They had CARES money that they were going to put in, so.
Yeah, we just want to make sure.
Have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Dietz.
Okay, so since we've worked so hard in the years coming, coming up before getting Chamber of Commerce going, I'm glad we're going to be able to help, I know where the money's coming from. Is there anything we can do to help them if they run into an issue? That we can do, like utilities and things like that, uh, to help, because um I know they're trying to go to two positions, but and we've worked hard and had a really good director the last two or three years for the Chamber of Commerce, and I hate to see that go down the hill real fast, because a city like this needs to have a good Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I wish we, it could be self-supporting, you know, but I I'm sure most of them aren't, but I I wish we could check into this and see if they need help, that we would be able to help some, if we have some expenses.
We are statutorily prohibited from providing um a general subsidy, so as a city, we cannot pay their utilities, we cannot just subsidize them, if that makes sense. That's why A and P can have a contract for services, but the city cannot.
That was Maggie Pierce's ruling back in 17?
There, there was an amendment to the Arkansas Constitution, there's been a statute which changed, and there's now a case law that supports that.
And back in 19, Stephanie and Lanny Richmond, the Chamber, the Museum, and the Boys and Girls Club, we all met to see what could be done, and Lanny and Stephanie worked out with each one of those entities what we can do, can and can't do.
Thank you.
We can go to the, we can come to the A and P Commission, ask for the extension, you know, for the extension on what we already funding, you know, to help if we get in a hard, hard spot, you know.
As long as they provide the service. Did that in for you, Steph?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I do have to say that we've got things moving in the right direction, Jacksonville's first new business coming town, I'll obviously say what they are, but uh, we've got some, some interest of, of new businesses coming here, so excited.
Some chickens coming is going to be really nice.
So, um. Yeah, so any more questions? Anybody have a director they wish to direct a question to, or?
I'd like to speak to the fire department and the police department.
Okay, y'all just each take your microphone, go to the table, and we'll let Cheryl stay up there with her computer to help. Cheryl, you can have the stool if you'd like it.
I'm fine.
Okay. We don't want y'all fighting either. No, you're green, you're good. And please state your name for the record, will you?
Chief Hibs? Chief Lawby. Chief Hibs, can you tell us that you have everything that we need for the police department for this next coming year?
No, um, I'm very pleased with this budget, more pleased, uh, it's more than I expected, uh, I would end up with. I don't know if it's our biggest budget ever, but um I'm super happy with it.
But we've got enough to where we can work with. How many police officers do we have?
Right now, I have 59. I have slots for 70, and so hopefully next year I'll go up quite a bit to 70. It's going to be tough in this, in this field right now, but.
So let me just clarify that, we're budgeting for how many?
70.
Yeah, okay, that's what I want to make sure.
I have slot, that's what I mean slots for 70, yeah. Um, I'm going to work on hiring, um, I'm working really on retention right now, keep people from leaving. Going to places that are offering um bonuses for certified officers, so I'm fighting to keep the ones I have. And next, I'm going to work on recruiting. Uh, in this market, it's very tough, because every department around us is working on recruiting and trying to recruit certified officers from each other. So I'm going to start recruiting from the community, and I'll do more for people that live here.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Chief Lawby, the same question goes to you about your department.
Well, it's a similar answer to the budget that we proposed, it's something we can work with for 2022. And we're asking for a total of 76 funded positions, and that includes the six positions additional.
Okay, and your new ambulance, you have that, you have people lined up to supporting it?
We started the process of interviewing and giving conditional hires for new personnel, but with the the transition of others either retiring or or resigning for personal reasons, it's, it's kind of been a catch-up. So we're really only up one position of the six that we need. I expect a uh, a member to leave the third week of December, and maybe in the first quarter of next year, someone may leave as well, I'm I'm not really sure, so it's, it's a constant flux, it's it's, it's the normal uh day-to-day business for the fire department.
How many do you have on roll down?
69 people right now.
How many are you budgeting for?
76. We have 70 that are funded now, I'm asking for 76, but we have 69 right now.
But we're do- we're doing good right now, though, right? Until we get this new ambulance?
That depends on what you mean by good. And I don't mean to be difficult by that, but we're looking at that.
No, I'm talking like if we had a major crisis here in town.
Right.
Would we have enough people at the fire department to manage that?
No.
I know that we'd have to have more from outside, but I'm just saying, in, in our entity, in our city.
Right now, no. If we had a mass casualty incident, we, if we get past six or seven patients, we would be overwhelmed.
Okay.
So the answer is no.
Thank you.
Yes.
What about code enforcement, Chief Hibs?
I appreciate what y'all uh said earlier. I think, in my opinion, I don't know what you say, but code is going very well. Uh, we've made a bunch of changes since I've been over there, and I put Lieutenant Wright in charge of it, I have a supervisor, which we didn't have before. Um, I have a civilian supervisor that directly supervises the code officer, she reports to Lieutenant Wright. I want to add another code enforcement officer this year, so I'll have four officers and one supervisor, and and Lieutenant Wright overseeing it. Lieutenant Wright is also over some other parts of the uh, police department, like the jail and um a few other things, so he has several different areas. Most of his focus, though, is on code. Um, the code enforcement budget, we increased some things, that we want to tear down some houses, we haven't been able to do before. So hopefully next year, we're going to do that, we had to cut, he's got a long list of houses to tear down, we don't have enough money for it. Um, so next year, we're going to work on, and he is going to work on um, trying to make that money stretch as far as we can to get, get some stuff cleaned up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rains.
Uh, Chief Hibs, could you elaborate on that civilian supervisor position that you were explaining?
Yeah, I had um a sergeant in code enforcement that reported to Lieutenant Wright, and that sergeant now is a community community officer on the police department side, and I promoted a code officer, um, Marissa Varger, to and create a position called code supervisor. So she supervises the other code officers, um, and mainly what I want in that is following up. Um, like I had a, somebody asked me about a, some cars we tagged um in a house a while back. I want to make sure those officers go back and do their job and follow up, whether it's three days, seven days, 10 days, whatever it is, and um, and do their job. So a lot of what she does is follow up, but she also does code cases also.
Right.
If that answered your question.
It does.
Councilmember Blevins.
Chief Lawby, uh, you said that you had six, six positions, which I know that we saw, but they were, they were going to be brought in, which was the team that was going to be for the ambulance. Uh, now, when I, when I called to ask questions about this earlier, um, I was told that there was going to be three for the fire department and three for EMS, is that correct?
Well, it's three for, for the fire department. When we were discussing that, what I was talking about typically, because all of the personnel work in the fire department, and we assign crews to the fire side, and we assign crews to the EMS side, we have two budgets by which we can pay them. So typically, our licensed paramedics, we pay out of the EMS fund, and then our licensing Ts that are with the medics on the ambulance, working as as their partner, we pay out of the fire fund.
So of the 76 people that you said that you have budgeted for this year.
Right.
That does not include the three that you have set up for EMS?
It does include it.
It does include it, so, okay, that's, that's what I want to know.
Yes.
And also, I spoke with you, I had a, had a phone call, spoke with both you and Chief Hibs about FMLA.
Yes.
Um, where, you know, it it seemed to be a, uh, you know, the, the team that were, that basically called, they were under the they were trying to initiate the idea that uh the two weeks that was offered going from 12 to two was uh, was not enough, and that it may have, may have been a reason to why maybe some people end up leaving, leaving the position or whatever. And uh, we, we had discussed about possibly changing that to uh, you know, three weeks for a, for a kid and six weeks for uh, for a family emergency. Is that still something that you think needs to, needs to happen? think needs to, needs to happen, or is that still something that you feel a change that should be made?
Well, as we discussed on the phone, I was open to changing it from two to three weeks and from two to six weeks respectively.
Is there?
But, but also, as I mentioned, that I don't think that we should do that in lieu of risking hiring six additional personnel, or, or perhaps a certain percentage pay increase and some other budgetary items, I don't think that that takes priority over some other benefits that, that we need, it's something I'd be willing to consider, maybe in the twenty-twenty-three budget, if we can squeeze that in there.
Okay.
The reason why I initially started with the two weeks is because we had already doubled our overtime for the year, and for about eight months worth of FML requests that I had for maternity leave alone, that was gonna cost the city between seventy-five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars, so for me, it was a cost issue, it was an affordability issue, it was a fiscal responsibility issue for us to take three steps back and reevaluate it.
Gotcha, same with you, Chief Hibs, okay, thank you, that's my question.
Councilmember Wright.
I have a question on the Community Development Block Grant, where is that in?
That is not a budgeted fund.
Okay, so that is completely separate from the budgetary process?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, then I will just use this opportunity to thank Lieutenant Wright for working with our CDPG program in dealing with the blight issue in our community, and just seeing the multiple departments working together to, you know, take care of the same thing is definitely a, a very appreciated thing for me to see.
I'd like to add that Chief Hibs, Chief Hibs, I would like to say thank you for being an extremely out there showing your leadership to your men, they know who they can come to, and y'all have done an excellent job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You guys definitely lead by example.
Councilmember Blevins.
I have one question, it's not them.
Okay.
Whenever, if we're done with them.
Okay, any more questions of these two?
Use that as a.
Run while you can.
Okay, my question is for, for the City Attorney, I noticed on here, which, I noticed on here for the legal fees, that you had listed forty-five thousand dollars for legal fees, is, is there something coming down the pipe that, that is, that it just kinda, kinda surprised me, I was just.
Cheryl and I discussed this, the legal fees, it's really hard to predict the future, a lot of times it depends on if we have employees who appeal their termination, they go to civil service, they appeal that decision, then it goes to Circuit Court, and I'm conflicted out of representing the city because I represent the Commissioners, so we have to outsource for that, so it's, it's really hard to budget for that, because we never know how much money we'll need there.
Absolutely, I just, I wasn't able to make it, because, I just saw that, I was like, do we have, do we have something to gum, like?
But you never do know, yeah, okay, any, yes, Councilmember Twitty.
Kevin House, I can't write him out without that.
That's right, we gotta give Kevin, you know, he was sitting over there thinking, I'm getting out of here. Okay, and please state your name for the record.
Kevin House. Yes, ma'am.
Kevin House, I have a question. Part-time, oh, sorry. Part-time help, it went, can you explain why it went up so much?
Which department?
Department forty.
We actually moved some positions from athletics to community center, our activity monitors have been budgeted under athletics, so we moved, it makes more sense for them to come out of community center operations.
Okay, I just needed you to explain that because it's such a large difference there.
They actually had emailed Cheryl and, and program that is going through what was presented, like, hey, there's a problem there, and they were.
And also on the janitorial supplies, the preliminary budget was twenty thousand, the recommended is zero, what is, that is, forty-one, Department forty-one?
All janitorial supplies are coming out.
Moved, okay, just needed you to explain it, thank you.
All right. You open the door, Kevin. So the part-time help moved from athletics to admin.
The center ops, our admin, I'm not sure.
Yes, center operations is Department forty.
Right, so that's why it went from what we spent in twenty-twenty of thirty-six thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, because you're moving it out of athletics.
Correct.
But the athletics was ninety-eight thousand, and we're budgeting a hundred and ten, so it's up too, so the part-time.
I did not, I don't do personnel, so, let me start with that, but I do know, when we, when Cheryl and Charlette and I talked, we, we had talked about moving them, that's what I was assuming the question was, is why it didn't went up, because it makes sense for center ops to go up, I, I don't know that I can explain why athletics didn't come down, though.
Cheryl, what is the overall increase in the budget for salaries in Parks and Rec? Part-time, full-time, and overtime?
And just Parks and Rec?
Just the, all the different Parks and Recs combined.
Okay, just a second, it'll take me a minute, too.
If anybody has another question for Kevin, while she's doing that, will you?
I don't have a question, but I am noticing that the line that you're talking about, Department forty-five, the part-time help, the preliminary budget does have it at two-hundred-and-nine-thousand for the year, and they only took one-hundred-and-ten, or wait, no, I think I got it flip-flopped.
No, you're, you're right, I mean, it did go down from the preliminary budget, but it didn't go down from, it went up from the last year's budget.
Right, it went up from last year's budget, but there's like a lot of inflation going on, but that, that is a ninety-nine-thousand-dollar difference.
I'd like to say something, are you the one that does the hiring over there at Parks and Recs?
One of, one of, one of you, yeah.
Well, I'd just like to commend you and whoever else is doing the hiring over there, they have got some really great people on, on board over there that's working with the youth and the adult program that they have over there, and it is just, it is, I cannot brag on them enough.
Good to hear.
The people that I come in contact with up there in the sports are like, y'all hit the jackpot.
I've got a great staff on.
You do, and so I wanna thank you for what you do over there and your staff, he's got a guy named Jody, Joe, I just wanna throw that out there, and a new guy named Cody, they are on top of it, and I mean, I, I cannot brag on these two enough, as well as all the other staff over there, they're all doing a great job, but these two are new to the program and to Parks and Recs, and they're doing an outstanding job, so, I don't know their last names, but Joe, Cody.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback off of that and, and just jump in and say for sure that they, that you guys have hit the jackpot of employees, because just seeing all of the new special events too that you guys have been doing, I know that this year you guys had like a fun run for the kids, had mud pits out in Whole Nine, and I know that that was really well received.
Well, Darla's like the Energizer Bunny over there. And the social media that she continues doing is really, really well received through the city.
And I'm, I'm greatly looking forward to seeing what's new next year, what comes back, you know, and just helping to get the word out and get our community together and, and playing, playing together.
Councilmember Blevins.
I have an answer for, for my trailer, okay, with all of the salary, overtime, part-time, and along with the benefits, that everything was increased by twenty-five percent, and I do know that part of that in, that increase has to do with APers, because our part-time people, some, some of them don't work the required however many hours per month in order to be qualified for APers, so in the past, we had not budgeted for them to have APers being paid, but we have found out that we're supposed to report them even if they don't meet those requirements, so.
Okay, and if I remember right, that means we pay that money to APers, when you say reported, that means we pay that money to APers.
Correct.
But they don't stay long enough to ever receive the benefit of that money, and we don't get it back, it goes to everybody else in the state of Arkansas.
Correct.
Would we not be better off instead of having two part-time people to have a full-time person, at least we're, we're paying APers, we would, they would get the benefit of that?
Let me answer that, that's less hands, bottom line, you know, I can have two part-time, and it's two bodies instead of one, part of that increase as well is the facility maintenance is now falling under parks, so I've inherited two.
There's a whole budget of a hundred and something thousand dollars in salaries for that.
But did you include that in?
I've, yeah, that's included in park salary.
Because it's all, account number oh-one-four-eight now is our facility maintenance, and there are, there's salaries under that.
And they used to be under Department seventeen.
And we did also vote for a salary increase, did this drastically impact your department more?
I had said that it did, yes, ma'am, I did. Dollar value.
Dollar value? It only shows me the percentage.
I'm sure it's at least half of that twenty-five percent.
It looks like it went from one-point-eight-four to two-point-three million.
Councilmember Blevins has his hand raised, Chair.
We're gonna let this question get over with first, Mr. Trent, are you good with? Okay, Councilmember Blevins.
I would just like to state also, in the, in the budget that Mr. House has set up, it also includes a giant LCD to replace the one that has been, been gone for like the longest time, which I'm really excited about, and also, he has a plan to hopefully do this staggered over the next couple of years, to create a, a huge informational square for the people of the city of Jacksonville, which I think is awesome, so I think it's, I think it's great that we're finally getting, getting a big LCD, so thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, you have your leadership.
Yes, sir.
Also, Kevin, I wanna say, the groundkeepers, they work overtime, they work seven days a week, and do whatever, I mean, it's.
I've seen them down here on Sunday.
Great staff, like I said, I can't brag on them enough, I put our parks staff against them.
I have a conversation with them, they're upbeat, pumped.
And most of them like you. Councilmember Dees.
Question on, I noticed, thank goodness, we're getting two more new police vehicles, but how many vehicles, just estimate, I know some detectives do, how, how many vehicles have we got that's a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-forty thousand miles? Yeah, I mean, whatever, but I'm just saying, you know, we, it's something we need to, to look into, again, you know, it takes a long time to get them, but, you know, you got your officers and detectives, nobody driving around in vehicles, and.
I think we have a couple new detectives.
Yeah, I know we got two new ones, but I'm asking, we budgeted for seventy people, we got fifty-nine, so, down the road, but, but just your opinion on our vehicles and maintenance, you know, when you start getting a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles on them, it's not safe, I don't think.
It's a tough question, I don't know how many are over a hundred, a hundred-and-thirty, but a lot, but I'll tell you, we've been, we, I've talked to Cheryl about this, they're our cheaper cars, but we buy the Ford SUVs, they're all-wheel-drive, I am very happy with the way they hold up, and maintenance, staying on the road, and the officers don't like them because it's hard to pursue in them, but I like that because we're not pursuing them, all right, so we pursue when we need to, sometimes they get away, they're not the fastest car out there, they're not the cheapest, but they're held up, which means my maintenance is under budget, and my maintenance budget's been doing really well, and so I like paying a little more for their cars that we're not gonna have to maintain, that makes it easier on the city garage and all of them, and we keep them on the road, it's more important to me that they're on the road and not broke down at the garage.
Yes, sir. Can I run a radio?
No, you know, they do well, they do well in pursuits, they're pursuit-rated and all that, we buy pursuit-rated vehicles, but, I mean, it's an SUV, you know, and they're, they're pretty quick, but, we, we're facing Dodge Challengers and Chargers and Mustangs, and I'm gonna tell you, I pursue, I don't have a number right now, because I'll have it at, on the end-of-the-year budget, I'm sorry, end-of-the-year report, pursuits have gone up tremendously across the country, the state police are reporting cars, writing tickets, over a hundred miles an hour has gone up like a hundred percent, I don't know, that's a lot, huge number, so everybody's seeing that, they're running from, we had two, three pursuits this week already, a lot of them jump on the freeway and they, and they're gone, sometimes we catch them, sometimes we don't.
I mean, like I said, all the departments do great, y'all, especially with the vehicles you got, but it's something I, I think we ought to.
We're, we're trying to build that up, and the mayor's been really good about that, we went five years without buying a car, that hurt us tremendously, and right now, we're building the fleet back up, and we're buying the SUVs, and I'm keeping more cars on the road, we, we push the officers to take better care of them, not drive them, rag them out and all that stuff the way they drive, and it's, it's doing pretty well, I'm, I'm kinda happy with it.
Okay.
But we do have several, several cars that are over a hundred-and-thirty miles an hour, a hundred-and-thirty.
Thousand.
Thousand, uh, miles, yeah.
Yeah, so yes, but no, I appreciate all your, the work that you're doing in buying better vehicles, keeping them, but I wanna make sure our officers, for sure, are, are safe.
Councilmember Wright.
So, first off, I wanna thank you for being proactive in getting us those numbers, one thing that I would like to see when we do receive those numbers is the difference between pursuits that started in city limits versus coming off of the interstate like the situation I discussed with you, but yeah, as, as an IT geek, I have been very much seeing the trend of people even recording themselves doing stupid things and being in pursuit.
I don't know why, but nationwide, the driving, y'all seen it around town, it's just terrible since the pandemic last year, I don't know, I don't know why, nobody knows why, but it's bad, but I like the data too, and that's why I wanna see it, I even hired an analyst this year in a position I wasn't using, and just to gather all that, because none of us have time for that, so.
Right.
I'm trying to do more of that, crime analysis.
Greatly appreciated.
Any, any more questions of Cheryl, the department head, Councilmember Blevins?
I have just one more question, on the, on the budget for the, the office of the mayor, it was set up, the thirteen thousand dollars for the person that sits at the desk up at the front, did that money get moved somewhere, or did they change?
Yeah, we moved it from the mayor's office down to Human Resources Department, it's in the Human Resources Department.
Her supervisor is HR.
Yeah, well, I, I just know that it was in, it was in there, and it, it wasn't now, is it still also thirteen thousand?
It's, it's still thirteen thousand, yes.
All right, Councilmember Trailer.
Two more questions.
All right, you can have three.
Are we hiring a city engineer?
We have it in the budget, and so, and we, and we've been advertising for that position, just, we haven't had any applicants.
Yes, my understanding is they have not, like she said, haven't had any applicants, I had discussed with Mr. Oakley about possibly having it to where they don't have to have the, the certification coming in, that they're willing to get that when they are employed with us, the accreditation that we're asking is above and beyond typical industry standards.
I got one more question, or not really a question, I guess a comment, you know, I understand Fire Department, Police Department, and I'm coming to understand Parks and Rec, they're a quality of life thing, that's why, I mean, we, we bring in more, we spend more money than we do, but look at our court costs, what are our court costs? I'm seeing five-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars for court costs, and we collect two-hundred-thousand dollars in fines, so we're spending three-hundred thou, we're losing three-hundred thousand dollars a year in courts.
Yes.
Why?
I do not have an answer for that, I do know that our judge is a Pulaski County employee, and she's a part-time, she splits her time between us and Ma'amel, we do have five employees that are city employees. I do not have an answer for that, um, I do know that our judge is a Pulaski County employee, and she's a part-time, she splits her time between us and Ma'amel, we do have five employees that are city employees over there this year.
And we just added one, right?
That made it five, yes.
I mean, it, it just seems like if there's one thing that ought to be self-sufficient, would be the courts, I would think it would be something that was actually generating money for the city, not costing us three-hundred.
Maybe we should look back eight or nine years and see what went on.
Yeah, I was going to say, wasn't it generating funds when, when Baton was?
It was different, yes, about double or more.
Mayor, the, um, what I was told is it's a little more, a lot more lenient, and they're, they're not finding the people like they used to, when you find the people and they do something wrong and they have to pay the fine, it brings money in, if, if an officer does his job.
Again, too.
Huh?
They might not do it again, too.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying, so if you, if you're lenient and you let people off, you know, and they did something wrong, they'd probably do it again if they get fined, which, which is what they ought to get if you do something wrong, then it brings that revenue in, Mike, and that's where we need to get the, the revenue up, you know, that's, that's how it happens.
I realize she doesn't work for us, but, but that's three-hundred thousand, I mean, we're going to have a balanced budget, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Correct?
Correct.
So that's three-hundred thousand more dollars that could go to Chief Loffy, you know, Chief Hibbs.
Yes.
Even maybe a little bit to you.
And in the past, whenever I've.
Is collected, you can't collect, if you, the people that go pay, or you go make them pay, you put them in jail, you still got to call them, you can't collect.
In the past, whenever I've asked the judge this question, I've been told that her hands are tied to what the statutes allow her to do. And that's the response that I got from her on those.
But there would be record of the, what she actually puts on the book of if it is the minimum or the maximum for that statute.
I do not know what they do over there, the records.
So is it possible to bring in the judge and ask her these questions? I think that would be a great idea, can we set that up for the next city council meeting?
Yeah, I will send you an email.
Perfect.
With that being said, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like, uh, to make a motion for us to table the budget for next meeting, uh, until, uh, we get those answers.
Is the only answer the judge, what are we looking for so that we can be working?
It's going to change what we do with the budget.
No, it's not. It's in there, I mean, it's already in the budget.
We, 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 we.
It's in there, but as soon as they sign the contract, then they will have that access.
And it's budgeted already.
Actually, what we have in Department forty-eight for the extra buildings outlying, not including our normal departments, I have fifty-thousand dollars in there for building and maintenance for the other buildings.
And how many buildings total are there?
Well, that fifty.
For, for that?
Yeah, that fifty thousand, it would cover, um, the, the senior center, the.
Boys and Girls Club.
And the Chamber of Commerce Building and the Historical Society Building, no? Okay, then, okay, so that takes, okay, so then it's those.
Just the three buildings.
Isn't that right, Kevin? Yeah.
Okay.
What about Martin Street, is it covered under that?
Martin Street is not covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's just in case something happens, so never read.
Right, it's, it's the maintenance for the buildings and, and having them up to date.
Yeah, we still do take care of the yard at the Boys and Girls Club, we just don't enter the building until we have a signed lease because of the liability issues, that says you can come in my building and do this, yeah, that's, so I mean, I, I do understand, if we're not going to change the budget, should we wait, or should we pass it, I'm just asking you all that question.
Hold on it.
Pardon me? We, we just put it on first reading, we haven't even approved it on first reading, and, okay, I entertain a motion.
I made that.
Will, you made a motion, do you have a second on your motion to table, I don't want to.
Oh, you're going to, no, I don't want to table it.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not going to directly impact, I mean, it does raise a lot of questions for me personally, seeing, you know, the difference between the, uh, projected versus what they're, what they're asking, but, um, if that's not going to directly impact a lot of everything else, then, and we can amend that should they not need five-hundred-and-twenty.
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Trailer, are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, making a motion to approve on first reading, all right, and place on second reading, all right, motion second, roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Yay.
Bolden.
Aye.
Blevins.
Aye, yes.
Sansing.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Mashburn.
Yes.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Reins.
Aye.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve on second reading, put on third and final reading.
Oh, second.
Okay, how about discussion, any more discussions for?
I just, you're, you're definitely good with this, Ray, Councilmember Reins, you don't have any other questions or anything?
I do not have any questions for the departments that have been here today and have been, uh, more than helpful in understanding the budget.
Would you like more time to look at this budget?
I, I would like more time, um, if we can just approve the third and final reading at the next meeting.
It's up to y'all, and so, uh, we're, we're putting it on the third and final reading, so that, we're going to prove the second if we vote now, and then we can wait for the third if that's how the vote falls.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If that's how the vote falls.
Yeah.
Y'all, the budget is balanced, what more can you balance?
Okay, so, roll call.
Well, what are we roll calling for?
Well, we have a motion to second to approve on second reading and place on third and final reading.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Yay.
Councilmember Bolden. Councilmember Blevins.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Reins.
Aye.
Okay, and if we want to put it off to the next meeting, that's up to y'all, but it's time for me to ask if there's a, a motion to adopt and approve.
Hold on.
And motion to second, so, Councilmember.
I had, I had, well, I mean, I had my hand up.
Okay, well, we got to get the motion out there before we can ask for a question, we're not roll calling, we just, it's out there, so now then, discussion.
I just, I just wanted to say that we, I'd like to make a motion for us to table, it's still next, city council meeting.
That's a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, nay.
Nay.
That's real call, and this is to table it till the next meeting.
I don't think there should be any, I mean, it doesn't hurt anything.
Discussion's over, roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden. Councilmember Blevins.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
No.
Councilmember Trailer.
Believe it or not, no.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Reins.
Aye.
That would be four six.
So it didn't pass to table it.
Yeah, because it needs two-thirds.
Right.
Well, it, well, okay, we're not, this is on the motion to table it, the motion to table failed.
Simple majority.
Right, all right, now then, we have a motion to second to approve and adopt, any further discussion? Say no and roll call.
Councilmember Bolden.
Aye.
What about Mr. Deeds?
I skipped around, I skipped around.
Oh, okay, you're confusing me.
Hey, I like it, I didn't have to vote first.
Turn down there.
I will, Councilmember Reins.
Oh, watch out, here she comes towards you, this is to approve and adopt.
Oh, okay, no.
Okay.
You're, you're, you're going around, all right, I like this, I'm not the last one to vote.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Councilmember Blevins. A or no?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty. You're the last one to vote, by the way.
How do you like it?
How do you like it?
Resting over the stage. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, now then, what?
Yes, thank you, Cheryl.
We're still getting emergency clause, so I entertain a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Second.
All right, any discussion, all who in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, we got to do a roll call, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Councilmember Reins.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
You're messing me up.
Councilmember Twitty.
I said aye.
Okay, Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Blevins.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden. Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Okay, so, before we adjourn, it's time for announcements, uh, I want to announce that we have the Christmas parade, uh, December fourth, which is Saturday at four, at three PM, and following that, we're going to have lighting in the chambers, putting lighting in the Christmas tree, live nativity singing, we got bouncy houses and food trucks, so, uh, it's a day of fun for the citizens of Jacksonville, so anybody can be there, be there, all right, Councilmember.
Six Hour is doing a gun raffle, it's to benefit, uh, the Christmas with the Cops, the program for twenty-twenty-one, um, Officer Wright is your contact person, or you can send an email to jgill@flop16@gmail.com, the drawing will be held December the thirteenth, the tickets are twenty dollars apiece, or three for fifty, so.
Is it for Remington gun? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I don't have guns, I don't want to get drawn.
So could we contact Officer Wright to get a ticket if we wanted one?
I have an announcement as well.
Okay, Councilmember Blevins.
Uh, I don't, I hate, this is probably going to end on a, on a bad note or anything, but I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know, uh, we lost, uh, an incredible individual by the name of Dean Douglas, his wife owned, uh, owns D-two Comics and More. Uh, I've known Dean for a long time, uh, they have an incredible store, they love this community, Dean loves this community, uh, I mean, his last official act was to, uh, to save a bunch of people, it was a horrible accident that happened, and, uh, I mean, it's, it really, it really sucks that we lost one of the good ones here in town, I just wanted to let everybody know that, that he was a, he was like an absolute great guy, and he will be missed.
Yeah, that was a real shame, uh, he, they, he loves Jacksonville, or he did, yeah, anything else to come for this council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We're adjourned, Cheryl, I have something for you.